Well, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Um, agenda, on the agenda, we need to amend it. Unfortunately, councillor Taylor isn't trying to be here, so we need to remove him from the council reports, the ten one. And is there any other additions or? Okay, sorry. Okay, George Lee moves the agenda as amended. Yeah, sorry Karen, I had that up for my Zoom meeting the other day. Okay.
So George Lee moved the agenda?
George Lee moves the agenda. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Any questions, errors, missions? Hearing none, Lael moves it. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to delegation. We have two delegations here tonight for Ron Pelham Award. So I'm not sure who's doing the presentation for it. Okay, the floor is yours.
Um, can I stand here?
Sure.
Marcia can.
Yeah, I can move things around here.
So Marcia, you want to come up and talk? So usually we do the Ron Pelham Award at the volunteer dinner, but unfortunately this year due to COVID restrictions, we weren't able to present it, but we're so glad that council let us be able to present both of these awards. At council meeting, letting a lot of community members see what outstanding volunteers we have. The first award is the Ron Pelham Award, and this is an award that's been going on for a long time. Our wonderful mayor was the first recipient of it, that I know of. And this award is given out to people who step up and volunteer in recreation, in sports, and in committees, and that kind of sports, and also in arts and culture. So anybody doing dance and, and those kinds of things that make up culture. And we sent out a request for anybody wanting to nominate some volunteers, and we're so glad that Marcia got nominated as a Ron Pelham nominee, and the committee met together and reviewed her nomination papers and thought she was the most worthy recipient of it. She's done a lot of years in, with the skate club, over 20 years from what I hear, that kind of dates. Through all her children. And she's done many jobs, sometimes putting aside some family stuff to take on responsibilities and making sure that skate club runs smoothly. And she's gone above and beyond. I'm just gonna read out, Kyle Wickstrom was the one who nominated her, and I'll just read out what he says. "I'm nominating Marcia for the Ron Pelham Award. I'm a new, I am new to Vulcan Skate Club Board, but in the short while that I have had the honor of learning from a great, a great selfless volunteer. Marcia has spent the better part of two decades being part of Vulcan Skate Club. Before she was president of the club, she put in countless time organizing the skating year and year-end carnival. As president of the Vulcan Skate Club, she has led the club through ups and downs, especially in this past challenging year of COVID. Marcia has always stepped up when needed to fill the void. For example, in the past month, the club had a casino, which is the main fundraiser for the club. With it being harvested, it was a challenge to find enough volunteers to fill the spots at the casino. Marcia volunteered her time for three out of the four shifts that the club needed to fill, even with her own family farm being busy and her time coming to an end as part as past present of the club. With Marcia just stepping down from skate, the skate club, the board now has enormous shoes to fill. I'm sure it will have to be done by a committee, and lots of people that I've talked to have said that. Everything that you've done, have done, will be done by a committee now. Thank you, Marcia, for the years of volunteering, so that the kids can learn to skate and to have a chance to earn a high level of figure skating. And that's what the Ron Pelham Award is all about. People who step up and volunteer and, and make this community a priority and the people that live in it. And we really appreciate everything that you've done to make this community a great place to live."
And on behalf of the recreation board, could I present this to you? Thank you. I have a lovely box for it.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. When Bonnie actually phoned me and left a message telling me that I had won the award, I was like super embarrassed. I didn't want to call her back. Because there are so many great volunteers, and to be picked out was, it is an honor. I think volunteerism is super important and what makes our small communities go, and it is the, it's what holds us all together through volunteering. That's how I know so many people, is because I volunteer, and that's how you meet people. So I encourage everybody to volunteer, and I'm thankful for this award. So thank you.
Norma, and Diane. So this next award is a brand new award. This is an award that we've been asked about for several years, about giving honor to community members who volunteer outside of the arts and culture and recreation area. And the committee decided this year that it was going to be the year, and unfortunately again, due to COVID, we couldn't present it at our, where we wanted to at the volunteer dinner. But again, council has let us present it here, so I'll turn time over to Norma.
Hi Diane, I'm here to, as chairman of the Volunteer Appreciation Committee. I'm not gonna read the whole blurb, I'll let you read it yourself, but all of us, I'm sure, have encountered Diane at various events in town. She's always ready to step up, but her main achievement, I think, is with Victim Services. An unparalleled position. I couldn't handle it. I'm too emotional. You have done a fantastic job. I've heard wonderful things, that you've been able to help people in a critical moment in their lives, and we thank you very much for that, I'm very sure.
Oh my gosh.
Isn't that beautiful?
That is beautiful.
It's heavy.
Oh, that's gorgeous.
Isn't that gorgeous?
Full community in our ear.
Yeah.
That's beautiful.
Nice to have in your home.
Thank you.
So thank, let's give our thanks to Diane.
Oh, come on, Marcia, when Jasmine phoned and told me that she is nominating for me, that for disappointing, and I went, "You what?" Because I too am kind of embarrassed, but I, I don't know, as I feel like I should get recognition for something that I felt like I was called to do. And joining Victim Services was certainly what I felt like I was called to do when they first advertised looking for advocates in 2000 or whatever it was. So I do feel like it was a call position for me, and, but I certainly appreciate the recognition for serving on that service. So thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you. We thank all our volunteers in the community for all that they do, and we look forward to seeing them at next year's volunteer award dinner.
Yeah, I think we can echo that from the council's behalf too, is that without volunteers, our community would be half of what it is or a quarter of what it is. So, you know, again, thank you very much for everybody that participated. And, and again, I appreciate what Marcia and Diane said, that, you know, there's so many volunteers out there, and we do have to try and pick one, and sometimes it's really hard for them to find one, but there's always somebody that stands out. And if it wasn't for them standing out, our community would be half of what it is. Thanks again for all your efforts. And again, we're gonna move on to the rest of council, but you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Mask, mask running to the door.
Okay, well, that's, that ends our delegation and presentations, and again, you know, it's, it's great that we have community groups that participate in these events, and it's too bad that this year, because of COVID, they weren't able to have their volunteer banquet or supper, or whatever you wanna call it. And, but anyway, we will move on to the public hearing. Bylaw number 1500-21, land use bylaw. And we did have one submission. And I think that was it, just from the memo from Old Nan River Regional that just highlighted.
That's right.
And there was nothing else, was there?
No, we had one phone call from a resident from another community that keeps abreast of everything that's happening in Vulcan, and inquired on the parking on this property, if that had been addressed, and of course, it was addressed in 1968 when the, when the property was actually built as a, as a threeplex then, so.
Okay, so is there anyone that wishes to speak to this public hearing? Being none at the meeting at the moment, we will, we will recess for five minutes, giving an opportunity for any latecomers, even though we are later than what we normally would have done. Hopefully somebody would have been here, but we will give the five minutes. So it is 7:11, so it's 7:16, we will. And the public hearing, so the public hearing is in recess right at the moment, waiting to see if somebody wishes to come forward.
So if council does want to have any, ORSC was good enough to put the memo together. It addresses everything that we previously talked about with the first reading. This is a property that was built for the purpose of being a multifamily unit, and most likely got overlooked in the mapping of the land use bylaw, and land use bylaw was updated. And so usually these things bring, come to our attention, we want to find a real property report or a sale of property, and this is the first sale of that property since it was built. So it's been in place for almost 50 years, and so we're going to amend the land use bylaw to, to make it right.
So unless somebody's got some questions on it, we'll, like I said, wait until 7:16 and.
The fun part of the public hearings.
So I said earlier, we should have moved them around so we could have waited through the public hearing while we're waiting for, did the volunteer presentation and delegation.
That building is that old. It does, it looks very well. Looks very modern, actually.
You know, and it's, it's one of the.
You need to go inside, apparently.
Oh, okay.
But, but it's one of the few, to be honest with you, that was in the community, that was done properly originally. It was, you know, it had the proper size of windows in the basement for, it had a separate exit. Heating system is independent from each other, so there's.
Separate metering.
You know, and separate meters, water, well, not water meter, I don't think, it's just the power meters.
Power.
And so, you know, it's one of the few, the very first ones that were done right, other than somehow this fell through the cracks and didn't get recognized as, in the P4 instead, it was still left as P1.
In, in reviewing it, it looks like it was, when it was built, we didn't, we didn't have zoning for multi-residential.
Oh, okay.
So when we added the multi-residential, it was most likely the same time they were doing a few of the fourplexes and the, most likely the 17 sweeter, and that's.
What's that?
And because that one looks so much like a house, that we figured that's why it got overlooked when, when they were reselling things.
What property is that, what?
It's Dorley Olney's old house.
Sorry?
Dorley Olney's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The brick one.
Um, well, it's not a brick.
There's a driveway going in.
Yeah, the cur, driveway.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, from the, from the street, it appears like a house, but if you look in behind, it's got the proper parking and then the rear entrances. It was built properly. It, when we reviewed the land use bylaw, it, it was kind of shocking to us that it didn't have the multi-red, because that's, we, everybody knew that's why it was built that way, so. Gave us a good exercise in amending our land use bylaw as well. We're gonna streamline the process for this as well, because this has been a, a long process, back and forth between the MPC, advertising, the readings. So we're gonna try to stream, why not?
Not a minute.
We have two to five minutes.
Okay, it's 7:16. Hearing, anybody else have any comment or question on it? If not, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on into the rest of the correspondence, or into the rest of the agenda. So the correspondence and information items. So 6-1, South Girl. Any question on? Anything that came out on South Girl? Okay, moving on to 6-2, Westbridge Energy Corporation, Mosley Georgetown Solar Project, Holman House.
So if this goes through, how many solar parks will we have in the county?
Well, there's, there's four, four that are approved, that I know of in the county. So whether they'll be all built, there's two being built right at the present. And this one here is the third.
I don't know if I need to hold there for it, it's four.
Yeah, four. Okay, any question on that? Okay, moving on to 6-3, which is the Saywell Board Highlights. So the board tries to approve them as quick as possible and get out some highlights of what was done. And then the second one is the Saywell Media Release, which is the media release for the, they put out that REO, REOI, and for requests for proposals, they had 29 took out packages. Well, really, there was 31, but one was HDR and one was US, you know, to make sure that it was how it could come out. So there was really 29 packages taken out, and there was three companies that submitted bids. And these were the three, Corbanta, which runs the facility in Durham, York. And then Hitachi, they partnered with Akona, and they run about 23 across Europe and some in the United States. And Suez Canada are the ones that are running the one at Swan Hills, right? And they also have ones all across. So they're huge, huge corporations. So now what will happen is the, it'll go through a process once the new board is appointed, and then they'll do evaluations and try and pick the best of the three. Any question on any of those two? Laura, I'm sorry.
So is the Suez one at Swan Hills, is that closed, Alan?
Not yet.
But that's when they're closing.
Two years, yeah. Two years, and it'll be closed. But they are, they are running it right at the moment for the province. Okay, now, the next one was from the CP Holiday Train. Normally it runs, but this year again, last year it wasn't, and this year it isn't, so they're doing a virtual holiday train. And so this is the information on it. Okay, so any question on any of those four items? If not, somebody wished to.
I'll move to accept these for information.
Okay, Lael moves these for information. Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaw policy and policies. So we have bylaw and a policy.
Two bylaws, sorry.
Pardon?
Two bylaws, sorry.
Oh, apologies. Yeah, two, yeah, two bylaws. So the first bylaw is the land use one?
Need to excuse myself for, can you read?
Interesting. Okay, so Lyle declares potential cumulative interest at 7:20 and has left the room. Okay, so we will move on to the bylaw itself. So we gave it first reading, we had public hearing, it's been advertised for three weeks. There's a memo there from ORSC. And we had one question on parking, and the parking has been met. And any questions on this before we call the next? Okay, hearing none, somebody wished to move the second reading? George Lee moves second. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Yeah, it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the third reading. Laura, great, thank you. Any discussion on Laura's motion to do the third reading? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, Lyle, come on back in.
That's 7:20.
7:21, Lyle's back at the meeting. Okay, so we'll move on to the next bylaw, is commercial procedure, council procedure bylaw amendment.
So, and councils all had a chance to read the report. We know that we've been working on this since changing the bylaw to allow for the appointment of the mayor, and it was decided that the procedure itself would be better put into policy, because that way you could address all the little areas of that, and then procedural bylaw be amended to just account for the mayor being appointed, and then refer it to the procedure for moving forward with it. So what, what I've done is I've put together the amendments, section 2.1, 1.4, procedure bylaw be amended by deleting the words duly elected and replacing with appointed by resolution. And the second, 7.3, be amended by deleting it in its entirety and then replacing with each councillor shall take the prescribed oath of office for the first order of business on the inaugural meeting, and that the election of a councillor to the office of mayor shall be the second order of business. The reason why you have to do that is, and we've got to see it to here next week, is council can't make a decision or a vote until they're all sworn in, so you can't appoint a mayor until actually everybody has done their oath of office. So, so you give everybody the oath, then they choose the mayor, then you can go into your normal order of business that is addressed in our procedural bylaw. And then 7.53, amended by including the words appoint the mayor and, and then it goes into the deputy mayor. I've included the bylaw for the three readings. You can give all three of them tonight. And one of the stipulations we put in there is we're gonna consolidate, because this is, of course, one of the bylaws that's frequently used by councils as a reference. So we want to have a consolidated copy of this, rather than having them go through the first one that you passed and then have to find the amendment, look at the changes, and see. So I've done a markup of the consolidation. Anything that is, is stroked will be deleted. Anything that's highlighted will be added. You can see they're referencing bylaw numbers for everything that's changed. And it's very straightforward. It seems like we've worked on this document.
A year.
Thirty times over the last two years, so you guys are very aware of the content of it.
Sorry.
So, uh, so yeah, you can give all three readings if you, if you like.
Okay, so any common questions from councillors? Okay, if not, somebody wished to give it first? Laura? Okay, so Laura moves the first reading. So any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And the first one is carried unanimously. Okay, second, George Lee is second. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Introduce the third. Lyle. Any discussion on Lyle's motion to introduce the third? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Okay, it is carried. So the third reading.
Carried unanimously.
Laura, yeah, it was carried unanimously, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was carried unanimously, sorry. All of them have been so far. So Laura moves the third reading. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. So all four of those who are carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Moving on to current business. Policy A20, the org chart.
So council had a chance to read the report. We amended the organization chart in February 2022 to accommodate for the change in the bylaw and development officer positions. As you know, things have changed since then. We ended up with council support hiring a development clerk and myself taking on the role of development officer, and we successfully recruited a CPO. So with that, and a new council coming into place, we just, with that recent change, thought we'd ever bring the organizational chart back to council for approval, just to amend it to take the development officer out and to add the development clerk.
Okay, any discussion on the proposed org chart?
How's it working?
So far, so good.
Okay.
The, it's actually the, splitting the development clerk and development officer into the two positions is really helping, because it gives two, almost two, it gives that second set of eyes to everything that we're seeing, so. And it's very helpful with the support of ORSC to be able to bounce things off of. Hopefully be able to streamline some of the processes.
Okay, any direction? Lael?
Make motion to council approve the amendment to policy A20 organizational chart as presented.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on, thank you to the Legion proposal for upgrades.
Everybody's had a chance. The Legion came in, met with the community services manager, and they're looking at doing some enhancements to their building. They put together the following proposal that you've all had a chance to read. Their request to the town is for seed money for matching ground and, and then letters of support. The letters of support, of course, we'll already do, because we have the policy that the administration can provide that as long as it benefits the community, which the Legion does. So really, at, at this point, council needs to debate whether. So really, at, at this point, uh, council needs to debate, uh, whether they'll be able to support with the five thousand dollar, uh, request and that, the interesting part with this is the grant application isn't due until January. So if you were to support this, this goes into the twenty twenty-two budget. So, uh, that will be, uh, for several of you, a different council that's going to be, uh, looking at this.
Okay, any thoughts or questions, Lyle? Yeah.
Just for clarity's sake, so this is five thousand, it's not in addition to the regular two thousand that we contribute?
It is in addition.
It is in addition.
Yes. So this would come theoretically, if the next council approves this and there, um, it'll come out of the grants and, and, uh, first, one-time loan.
Yeah. So in the budget, we have the recurring grants to organizations. So this would be added to the top. So normally we put three thousand dollars in there for, so for twenty twenty-two, it would be, uh, eight thousand dollars that would be required in there. Sorry, not the recurring, the one-time grants to organizations because this would be a one-time.
Like the two thousand dollars is a recurring one that we have done for, for years and years and years, um, to the Legion. And that's to support the whole portion of the facility. So this one here, they're asking for us to be the host of the grant application for the community facility enhancement. And then also to, if they're successful, to come up with the five thousand dollars.
And so that's why I worded the motion if council doesn't want to support it that way because he shouldn't just make the motion to just blanketly the five thousand dollars. If it's tied to the grant funding, it needs to be tied on the approval of the grant funding. Because if they don't get approved, we, we've all, we've been there before with municipal grant applications before where, you know, if you don't get that funding, then you have to reroute from elsewhere. And sometimes it can halt the project altogether, so.
Laura? Do they feel like they'll have trouble raising like five from us and five from them? Do they feel like they will have trouble raising the other fifteen?
Didn't get much of an education. No, they're just putting that out there to get started. This is, I believe, we're the, well, we're the first ask on from a municipal side.
Well, I don't think it was hard to give it to them. And I guess for me, they have a random down there, so.
Okay.
And that's why the hall is kind of a good one. It's between the lodge hall size and the CRC, so it is good to have the community.
So somebody wish to make this?
I'll make that option too.
Okay.
So do you want to do that, uh, the first two?
The first one?
The first two items as one? Big motion, or do you want to split them up? Uh, and then, uh, if, if you don't mind, counselors, I'll, I'll read it out to see if that's, uh, the council approved the town of Vulcan provide a one-time grant of five thousand dollars to the Vulcan Legion branch one twenty-one. Number twenty-one for the purpose of exterior building repairs pending a successful application to the Alberta Government Community Facility Enhancement Program with funds to be drawn from the one-time grants to organization portion of the twenty twenty-two operation budget. And the council directs administration to include the five thousand dollar donation to the Vulcan Legion in the one-time grants to organization portion of the twenty twenty-two operation budget and provide letters of support to their grant application. That covers it, that covers it in one motion.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any further discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, so moving on to October twenty-fifth, regular minutes meetings to be canceled. I think Kim kind of highlighted it earlier, but, um, being that it's our organizational meeting and, um, a little bit different than normal, um, the request is to make it, uh, cancel it for that night so that we can have our org meeting at seven o'clock instead of at six o'clock and, um, go through the process.
Counselors that are, counselors that have been here know that, uh, our, our meetings generally only take about an hour, so we generally set them up at six o'clock, done by seven, we can go into the regular business. Being that it's an election year, a lot of people, there's not a lot of groups asking for, uh, there isn't a whole bunch of current business that's coming up. So canceling this meeting and putting your business off till November ninth is not going to be, uh, uh, much of an issue. And that will allow for the new counselors to spend that much more time in the, uh, in the inaugural meeting to do the appointment of the mayor, all of that stuff, which is all brand new, so. No, no time constraints on having to start a meeting at seven o'clock immediately following, so.
Well, since I'm not going to be here, glad to move that.
Gladly cancel the meeting.
Laura moves to council. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we will call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
Eight point four.
Pardon?
Eight point four. The recognition.
Oh, I apologize. I would put that beside, sorry. Oh, that, okay, recognition for services outgoing council members. Yes, that was, Kim and I discussed this and I apologize for jumping over it. Um, in the past, I don't think we've done this and I, I think it's something that we, we missed on is to say thank you to the counselors that have been here. You know, like Laura and George Lee and Paul, you know, all have put in, you know, the,
Eight years.
Eight years. And, and, um, you know, and again, we talked earlier with one of the previous counselors of the three-year term and, you know, with the government changing it to the four-year term. So you guys have put in eight years. And, you know, not to say that Michelle and Laura, the years is only one term, but, you know, your term for four years that you've devoted to this community and, uh, again, the eight years for the, the other three outgoing counselors has not been missed, um, admissed or, or we really appreciated, you know, your dedication and your, um, I think that just what all of you guys, all, uh, five of you have participated as much as, if not more than what, you know, could be asked of any counselor. Any committees that you guys have taken on, you've been, um, fulfilled them and, and participated in them in a hundred percent and, and it was so great to see that if there was a committee that you weren't able to participate in, for some reason, you worked it out and we were able to have the alternate be there and, uh, represent us. And, um, again, I personally like to appreciate the attire that our counselors have. I've been to lots of councils in my, over my years and it's nice to see that you represent, represent our community, you know, with class, the way you dress and, and the way you do the acting and, uh, and represent this community as a whole. So on behalf of myself and, you know, the members of the community, I'd like to thank all five of you outgoing counselors and, uh, appreciate what you've done for us this past four years and eight years for, for the three. Yeah, and yes, oh, I'm sorry, Paula, yes, another Paula, yes, and thank you very much for, um, all of that and, you know, appreciate Lyle throwing his name back into the hat for another go and, and, um, and the, the five new ones that have thrown their name into the hat to, to be here. So anyway, on behalf of, uh, the community, we'd like to thank all five of you folks.
Thanks to you too, Paul.
Yeah.
How many, is this your second term?
Yeah, second term. I'm just a newbie. I'm, I'm like Laura and Michelle, just, just new at this game, so. But again, thank you very much for everybody for participating, so. Anyway, that's it for current business. And so, um, we'll move on now to the community reports, um, that were submitted. So the first one is the mayor's reeves. It was done by Zoom. I, I pretty well, I think, have highlighted the majority of the stuff that was on this September the tenth meeting, but, um, most of them are mayor's reeves. There's about fifty participants. Um, you know, Mayor Hickey, Hickey, Hick, Hick, Hickney, um, who's the reeve of, um, Leffbridge County, does a quite a good job of trying to govern. Some of them are not as kind of, you know, what it's like on a Zoom meeting if you forget to mute your mic and your dog is barking or you're yelling at your kid or whatever the noise is in the background, you hear it on a Zoom and, and Laura's pretty good at trying to stick handle through all of that, so he's done a good job. I don't know if he's going to run again. I mean, not running again for the mayor's and reeves as the chair, but, um, I'm sure there'll be somebody step up after the election. Any questions on the mayor's and reeves, written one? Okay, moving on to community futures. Again, this was one of Michelle's and thank you from Michelle for participating in this group and representing us and being there for us. Any questions for that one? If not, we'll move on to the SABAB board meeting of September twenty-four. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on to the foundation. Again, Laura, thank you very much for, for, you representing us at the foundation from last, is it eight years that you've been there or seven?
No, no, Sue did it before me, so.
Oh, okay. But anyway, for length of time you have, I mean, all you guys committees have been, it's been unbelievable how well you've represented us, so. Any questions for Laura on anything that? Okay, moving on to the flying club. Kim?
And based on the, uh, agreement that, uh, council just approved, uh, they wanted to make sure that, uh, you were getting your minutes, that that is, uh, was part of the agreement.
Okay, any questions on any of those written ones? Okay, if not, need a motion to file. Laura? Okay, so Laura moves this. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to verbal reports. Counselor Devault.
Um, I had the BBDS meeting. Um, basically what was just put in, a motion to dissolve it and to, uh, divide up the funds, there was a fair amount of money left in there. So we just kind of went through where we thought it should go to enough. Jason said that he would get, um, the minutes out for it. So I did ask him if he would just forward them to Karen when the minutes come out, but I haven't seen anything yet. And I had a rep meeting meeting, I think there was no call, called on Thursday. So basically everything we talked about is in Bonnie's report. And, um, other than that, I have three meetings next week and.
Okay. Any questions for George Lee? Hearing none, thank you very much. Counselor Magazine.
Uh, I didn't have any meetings during this stretch, but just a couple of community notes. Um, like to thank the, uh, pretty positive response, uh, regarding the issue with people taking their dogs off leash and stuff. Like, I see in her report, she's, she's done a good job and there's been, uh, it's been noted how things are being taken care of and just wanted to pass that positive note along. And, uh, just in regards to the walking path by the golf course. I get up at the hour of stupid each day and, uh, the sprinklers run and it's, with their cold temperatures, it's freezing. It was almost like a skating rink on the cell stretch there by the trees. And I was just, obviously Paul's not here, but it might be something that we might want to look at in the future of somehow maybe the, I'm not sure if you can turn off those certain sprinklers, but it could be, it, it was pretty icy and if someone's not paying attention, you can end up slipping and falling because it's so icy on that stretch.
Especially when it's nice and dark.
Well, you could see the streetlights gleaming on, that's how I, I had a bit of a heads up, but otherwise, yeah, I'd be taking that.
Okay, so you noted that.
I got the golf course irrigation on walking path.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Okay, hearing none, thank you. Moving on to Counselor Thomas.
I didn't have any meetings this last four rounds either, but the library has a gift basket raffle. Um, starting up in the next couple of days, the basket will be at the library. We've had donations and stuff coming in, so it'll be out on display in the library in the next few days.
Laura, what, what night is the library meet?
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, we were all, we were trying to figure out when the library met and.
Yeah.
Everybody had a different date.
Third Wednesday. Uh, lately they've been, uh, we've been meeting at the senior center because we have more room to distance. Um, and some people have been joining by Zoom, so it's been mixed meetings this last little.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Laura? Hearing none, thank you. Moving on to Counselor Roddy.
I'm a Mytun and Self Grow on Laura's behalf on the twenty ninth. I'm sure everybody is seeing the minutes and it's pretty heavy reading. Um, kind of the biggest takeaway was the increase in membership for APB to a dollar from fifty cents for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, like half of ten thousand dollars. Uh, it's based on our recommendation from the Sustainability Committee, um, which is headed by Lori Lickman. Um, and then also the action to renew logging for the government of Alberta funding. Um, typically they would get a hundred thousand dollars, but because of that big cut, that's a huge hit on their, um, kind of projects and stuff like that. It makes a very significant difference. So I hope we can kind of try and balance it with the increase of the membership.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Hearing none, thank you very much. Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you to Michelle for going for me and Kim for also filling in. That was wonderful. Uh, I had the Marcus Foundation and, um, we received two, or the Marcus Foundation received two thousand dollars from Black Spring Community Fund. And it's for purchase of an ODI. Now, I don't know what that acronym stands for anymore, but it's put on a table and it's interactive and it's lakes and it's, so it's for movement and cognitive, uh, skills and whatnot for the seniors that are in the lodge. And we've seen it, we, we actually saw it at the virtual convention and then, um, we have seen it displayed and it, it looks like it's really quite good. So they're still going to be short sixty-five hundred, oh, yeah, it'll still mean another sixty-five hundred dollars. And so they're looking at ways of raising some money to, to pay that off. I was at the BBDS with George Lee while we dissolved the society and it was kind of bittersweet. Took a lot of years to build it up and poof, it's gone. Um, and I think that was all for, yeah, they were holding some funds for the Historical Society and they were going in trust, so be able to check that out. And, um, I was on a Zoom meeting for the Health and Wellness Foundation. Um, they could see me, but they couldn't hear me. I could see them, but I couldn't, no, I could hear them, but I couldn't see them. It was just, I thought of all the Zoom meetings I've been on in my life and that was my last one and it didn't work. I was kind of disappointed. The new members are Harry and Ashbacker, Laura Lee Dexty, Shiloh, Andrews, but I forget what her married name is. Brown or something?
Brower.
Brower, yeah, great. Uh, Tony Garlock, Jim Hendry, uh, and Nicole McNivin. And, um, they're thinking of working with the, uh, joint use, or working on the joint use symposium and, and the space agreement. The, um, pledge drive starts November first to December thirty-first and the online auction through McManamaly's is the sixteenth to the nineteenth of this month. So everybody go on and see if there isn't something you'd really like to put your name in on. They're hoping to have a golf tournament June seventeenth of next year. And they're working with, um, I'm programming with Wellspring Calgary, which is, um, to support. And they're working with, I'm programming with Wellspring Calgary, which is to support cancer patients. It's nothing to do with medical or treatment type things. It's all due for any kind of other emotional or whatever other kind of well treatments that can be supported for anyone suffering from cancer. And they figure there's about sixty thousand people in Southern Alberta that fall into this category. So we could end up being a help maybe. We'll see how that one goes. And that's it.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Hearing none, thank you very much. Moving on to me. I had a Fresk meeting, had problems getting in and Jason was kind enough to send me an invite so that I could go in a different way than what I originally was going to go. I was there on behalf of Paul. The Minister of Health was there. Unfortunately, you know, he just got appointed as minister and he was fulfilling some of the previous ministers' portfolios or requests to come and talk to Fresk about communications. Unfortunately, I didn't hear some of it, so I kind of roasted the government a little bit on ambulance care or ambulance. And so I'm not sure if it went over well with the minister, but at the end, the rest of the group thought that it was something that the minister needed to hear. I didn't quite say that they should be firing EHS employees, but I think that I implied that some of the EHS senior management could be replaced and we'd never miss them. So I hope that he got that message that there is a major problem. Of course, he, he came back and said that the major thing that they need to do is worry about COVID right at the moment. And I said, well, if you wait for COVID to end, EMS will probably be the, the, the next thing that you'll have to deal with because it's, it's, it's up there with COVID of, of how, how serious it is. It's on death's door. So anyway, we had quite a discussion. Every municipality that was there that represented, that was on Fresk had concerns and questions. The MLA for that area's father was involved with the EMS in Calgary originally. And so he has invited some of us to speak to him directly. So when I say us, I'm not sure if I'll get an invite, but anyway. The next meeting I was at was mayors and reeves. And at the mayors and reeves, like I said earlier, it was usually about fifty people there. There was only two MLAs that were there. Grant Hunter and our MLA representative. And then MPs, there was just our MP that was there.
Martin Shield.
No, MP, Martin Shield. He does come to most of the, the mayors and reeves or participates in mayors and reeves, has a little bit of report and then goes on to there. So I don't think there was anything that really came out of it. I think everybody was trying to either wind down or wind up for the elections for the municipal. There was no questions about any of the plebiscite questions, which some people thought there would be on, you know, concerns of the two plebiscite items, the problems put there and the three appointments for senate, which is coming up next Monday. So that's about it for mayors and reeves. The SEWA, we had the steering committee meet on the Tuesday last week to discuss the, the media release and the applications from those three candidates. Each one of them has about a hundred and sixty to two hundred page submissions. And so we got them on Monday night and we're expected to have them read by noon. Well, it was four o'clock our time on, on the Tuesday. Originally, it was supposed to be eight in the morning, but we moved it to four. So I came down here and used the grandson visiting, so I thought it was better than him yelling, Papa, what are you doing? Papa. So I figured, well, I'll be more, so I came down here and Kim set it up and Karen let me use her area there. So out of that, the media release was recommended to the board, which met on the Friday, the eighth. And the board approved the media release. And out of the board of her SEWA, Kim Craig is not coming back. Ben Armstrong is not coming back. John Hamm, who is from Three Hills, is not coming back. Joe Watson from the town of Pichi Butte isn't coming back. Bob Reed is running in an election and so is Ryan Fleetwood. Greg Shepherd has been appointed. Ray Jessica, who is from Newell County, he represents the Solid Waste Authority. And he is now running for the city of Brooks as a councillor, so he hopes to be back. So there's potentially that out of our twelve board members, we'll lose at least six potentially and hopefully. Now, we did send out that letter earlier saying that if we weren't, if you weren't successful, you could be appointed. So I, I know the county did look at appointing Ryan if he wasn't a successful candidate. And, you know, wasn't successful to get back onto the solid waste and represent the county. So out of that meeting, there was a bit of a discussion. We, we did have Wheatland, not Wheatland County, sorry. Newell County is doing one application for a grant and they're sponsoring it. And it doesn't matter whether their county, county councillors change or not, they, they approved to sponsor it. And we have a letter, a couple of letters from MLA from, from the Newell area. And also Martin Shield has given us a letter of support for some funding application. And the funding mechanism is to take this, three groups that submitted applications and go through their applications and get it down to one. And the one comment that was made by the engineer is, this is a five hundred million dollar project. He figures that by the time the smoke clears, it'll probably be a seven hundred and fifty million dollar project. So it's, it's something that's going to be well worth it for the communities and hopefully we can move it forward. Any questions for?
What was the, what was the lady's name that came to talk to us? She was running for the senate.
Yeah, so, yeah, we get to choose three and I think there's five that are running, have the names for, or is it four? Four, I think it is, that's, we're running for the three positions.
For the senate, there's twenty-six.
Twenty-five, I apologize. Oh, there's that many?
Twenty-six.
I didn't even know that was the names.
Oh, I, I didn't realize it was that many.
I think we're picking three out of twenty-six.
Oh, three out of twenty-six, okay, well, great.
Couldn't remember her name.
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you for reminding us too, so. Anything else for me? Okay, if not, can somebody move the counsel, George Lee? Move the council reports to five? Hearing any discussion? Hearing them, we'll call a question. And it is carried unanimously. Now, did we want to, there was something that was missed.
If, just to break from procedure a little bit, council can allow, through a unanimous decision, for something to be brought to the agenda. As you all know, I've been working on that airport agreement for the last two months. It was supposed to be on the meeting tonight. I don't know why it didn't get uploaded. I have the report ready. It would take us a little while longer because obviously you guys haven't read through the entire report. I don't know if it can be put to the next council, but of course that will be November ninth. And there'll be a whole bunch of background that'll go along with this. Most of you know the background on why we're moving forward with this. I guess I need to ask council if you'd be willing to bring it forward and spend the time to review it tonight. Or if you would keep the agenda the way that it is and move on with our points.
What's your thoughts?
I think tonight makes sense because it's not really fair to put that onto literally the driving council.
You could add a fifty point five under current business.
Right.
And go back to it.
Is there any other discussion on that?
But you need to get out this motion. So shall you make that motion?
Okay, so where the theory is we'll move it under current business, eight point five.
And that's the airport agreement?
An airport agreement. And any discussion on adding this to the agenda? And then we'll bring it up. If it's not unanimous, it will die and the next council will go with it. Okay, any discussion on Michelle's motion? Hearing them, we'll call her a.
Karen, can you quickly just put something?
Just in addition to the agenda.
Add, just put add eight point five and then send a motion. And then I'll bring up the report. This is not going to look like your normal agenda report, so just sign in and bring it up.
Karen, Michelle?
Yes, please. So you can bring that up anytime you're ready, Karen. Okay, so it's up in front of you. You can vote for it or against it. It's carried unanimously, so we have a, go back to eight point five, which is the airport agreement and Kim is.
Bring it up. It's a report. It looks like it's there. It looks like it's check marked for export. So I'm going to have to see how I may have exported it to a different meeting. It may have gone to the org meeting, so I apologize. So the purpose is that the Flying Club, this approach to town, would like to take over an active role in the, in all aspects of the airport. The summary is the town and the county airport commission has managed the airport from a committee level and then public works have done there. And then coordinated the work. The town of Vulcan has taken care of things like the lot leases and NAVCAN matters. And the town has also been responsible for maintenance, like the runway, snow clearing. The county has been mainly responsible for gravel control and dust payment. We've done that through, several of you have sat on the airport committee. The airport committee gets a budget of eight thousand dollars from the town and the county. We do this work and we bill it out so that we fully share the amount of work. So, you know, if the county brings ten thousand dollars worth of gravel, the town and the county will pay five thousand dollars for that and bill it to the committee. That way, it's evenly shared between both of us. Now, having said that, the Flying Club are the ones that are recommending most of the, the majority of the things that happen out there. Any of the development, those sort of things, because they're active members of the community and active members of the club. So they feel that there's quite a few layers of bureaucracy in there because of course it goes, they make a motion at a Flying Club meeting and it has to come to administration of the town. We have to put it on agenda for a Flying Club. Sorry, the airport commission, the airport commission discusses it. It potentially then has to go to town and county council for approval, back to the commission, back to the Flying Club. So their suggestion is, hey, let's eliminate the, the airport committee and let's deal directly with council through an agreement where we'll operate the thing. You guys provide us with the funding at the same level that you're doing it now. And as long as the town and the county will continue to support with the public works through. And when it was brought up to the airport committee, and Paul's missing, but Lyle was there, it seemed to be very well received. So over the last two months, we've been working on the agreement. It's been sent to the Flying Club. I actually went to, as you saw in the minutes, I went to their meeting, presented the agreement. They had a few amendments. I sent those amendments back to the committee, sent the amendments to the county. The county approved this agreement at their, at their October sixth meeting, so last week. And again, I apologize. It was coming to you tonight for, and because you didn't have a chance to go through it. I'll read the main obligations for the town and then we'll go through the agreement itself fairly quickly. Point one member, elected official to attend regular meetings and a voting member in the Flying Club. So that's something different than we have now. We two, currently have two on the, on the airport committee. This will be electing.
This will be something similar to what we do with the, the golf course.
Golf.
Where we have an elected official asked to be on there as a voting member of their club.
Because of the financial interest that was there. They'll take an annual, we'll make annual financial contributions to the club operations. And the way that we've done the agreement, they're exactly the same as what we're contributing to the committee as it is right now, which is the eight thousand dollars a year. Subject to availability, which we always put in there because we don't, we can't have the Flying Club just giving direction to public works to go all the time. So it's always subject to availability. If they're asking for gravel from the county, it will be when the gravel trucks are coming to town, not, they're not going to stop their work and especially bring. And the same goes for snow removal, those sort of things. If we're having an emergency in town, the runway will have, will be shut down until we get the emergency routes cleared. Which we already do and we all work together really well with that as it is. So the town will remain as the Vulcan Airport primary contact or all correspondence with NAVCAN and Transport Canada. And that's really just, they need an official municipality, the owner, when we sign off on that stuff. So the Flying Club will make all the submissions, those sort of things, but the town will sign off on all of the, all of that work. So the agreement's been reviewed by the county and the Flying Club and approved at the county council level on October sixth. Operating budget will be eight thousand dollars annually. And then of note, capital projects, so anything outside the operational budget that is a capital project that they would like to do will be funded first by grants related to the project and then the remainder played thirty-three percent by each of the town, the county and the club. So that way, we're all shared equally and the main focus is getting our grant funding to do these. And we've done that in the past when we did the lighting out there. The club applied for a grant, the town applied for the grant. And through everybody working together, we managed to come up with the money, enough money to replace the lights out there. And again, from a county and a town standpoint, the thirty-three percent really works well for them to give a lot of thought on, rather than just asking. You know, if, if it was fifty fifty, just the town without a club stake in it, then they could ask for brand new paved runway every three years or that sort of thing. Because they have a stake in it by paying thirty percent of the capital costs, it, it makes them really prioritize what's the most important for capital costs. And I put a motion in there for you guys to consider approving, but I completely understand if you would like more time to review. So the agreement itself is the standard template that we use for all of our agreements, includes the Flying Club. It will have, just gives the, their society that was established in nineteen sixty-three. The town owns the land, the county owns the land. We have definitions. They're pretty straightforward, betterment, capital assets, capital projects, improvements to land themselves. That's something that a lot of people need to be aware of as well, is the airport is one site. So there is lots in there, but those are leases. They still land under one title. So when somebody leases a lot, they don't get a title out there. So, and because it's in town, it is one property, so we have to deal with the development out there a little bit differently. We treat it like a lot, but it isn't a titled lot. So things like setbacks and all those things can be dealt with a lot, a lot more easily out there. One of the things, the, and I guess the background on this, we, we explored quite a few agreements with different municipalities, with different Flying Clubs. And this is a template that was taken from Rimby that seems to be working very well for them. So basically what we're doing is from a town-county standpoint, is giving the Flying Club exclusive use of the grounds. So they'll take care of the leases, that sort of thing, the maintenance by asking for our assistance. And again, gives them the opportunity, if we can't haul gravel fast enough or we can't get the grass mowed quick enough or, you know, the weed sprayed quick enough, they can always hire a contractor as well. This gives them that flexibility to do that as well. The term is for four years. Eighteen months, no. Eighteen months notice for termination in writing. And then on termination, the club shall yield the airport in good condition back to you. They need to acknowledge that the, it's for public interest, so the Flying Club can't just block things that the gates have treated as a, as a private club. It's for the public interest and so it needs to be open to the public, but also remaining safe for the users that are there. And yeah, the, the town and county want the club to promote civil aviation and accommodate air flight for the benefit of the town and county residents, businesses and visitors. Budgeted fun, funding, they will provide a budget before October fifteenth of each year, same as every other group that we ask and that we fund. And it's so that council can review it and obviously set the budgets for the interim budget before the end of the year. The town and county will contribute at, to the operating costs and we'll do this before April thirtieth. Reason why the April thirtieth, we have to collect some tax before we have enough money to pay out all the other groups that we pay funds to, and they were good with that. We'll collaborate and apply for grants. The club will present a five-year capital plan to the town and the county councils by October, so that just all accommodate their budget is, so that we have an idea of what capital projects they're looking at. So that we can also put money away and correspond. Touches on the capital projects that both councils will have to review, capital projects and approve them. It'll be done on the thirty-three percent. Annual project-based funding will be paid only when the contributions within the agreement have been met, still up there. If they did something like let the society status Latin, we wouldn't be giving any more capital funding. When a single non-budget emergency, so we had to deal with the emergency items that may come up. For a single non-budgeted emergent repair, which costs more than five thousand dollars, the club will cost sharing with the town and county councils. Who will evaluate the request and, and slowly fund. Each one will individually approve the funding. So we'll go through the town of Vulcan, I've already listed those in the report. The counties is very similar, they're gonna elect one, they're gonna contribute the same, they're gonna provide operational support through their operations and ag departments. And will maintain the liability insurance, cause the county's always through Jubilee, and we use similar, they've always taken the lead on the insurance side of the, of the airport. I believe that's because they were originally the landlord, it was originally in the county then.
Yeah, it's originally.
Annexed into the town in two, in two thousand and one. The Flying Clubs is obviously a lot longer, they will operate the airport in a manner that attracts citizens and businesses to the area. They'll operate, develop and upgrade, maintain the airport lands to the satisfaction of the town and county. They'll ensure the airport is available for use by the public at large, including charging any fees as set in accordance with section eight. They take proper care of the airport lands as careful and prudent owners would. To operate the airport safely and efficiently and effectively and develop such business plans that are prudent for the long and short-term operation of the airport. Ensure and maintain access to emergency vehicles within the land. To obtain permits required to carry out the operation, maintenance or betterment to the airport. So if they wanna build a structure, that sort of thing, they go through the same permitting process that, that anyone else does. They will manage the solicitation administration of airport hangar agreements related to the private hangars. Including ensuring that terms and conditions are the same are being observed at all times. And this is, this is a nice one, I guess from a town standpoint. We sign a lease agreement for the hangars out there. But, and there's things in there that, you know, they have to maintain the property, they have to maintain insurance, those sort of things. We never really go out there as a committee or as a town or that to check to make sure that they have insurance or that sort of thing inside their, their lease agreement. Where these guys that are out there every day, they know that stuff because they talk to each other and, and then it becomes a little bit more self-leasing than, than what we create the, the level that we currently have. To secure and pay for insurance obligations as required, cause they do, are required to have their own insurance for certain things out there as well. To provide, pay and operate and maintain, this case may be all the utilities for the land under the, and then it says that the hangar agreements are responsible for their own utilities. Other costs and charges for maintenance, operation, repair incurred by the town and county at the club's request. So they'll pay for any work that they ask us to do for them. Provide annual operations budgets, not carry on or permit any activity on the airport land that's in contradiction with the laws, bylaws, statutes, rules, orders, regulations of any government authority enforced from time to time. So they just can't break the law. If they're doing something out there that's breaking the law, it'll breach this agreement. The cost for the town, the town and county to go back on the agreement. To remain in good standing at all times, the club will provide immediate notice if they wanna discontinue or intends to discontinue operation or if it dissolves. The club shall provide such information to the town and county as it's reasonably requested from time to time, including the status of operations. Membership of the board, directors, officials, volunteers of the club, copies of their annual financial statements and minutes of the board and directors meetings. So that's why they set this, the first set of meetings minutes, is because they, you know, in their mind, they're happy with this agreement, so they're gonna start meeting all the clauses in it. The club shall notify the town immediately of any inspections, so NAVCAT comes down, wants to inspect the runway, those sort of things. They, they'll let us know and keep us up to date, especially with environmental complaints or that, and that could happen with the spray tanks working out of there, those sort of things. The club is responsible at sole cost or expense for repairing, maintaining, update, replace any mobile equipment used in the operation in the airport regardless of cost. So if they decide to buy a mower or quad or something like that, that's on their own. Providing all janitorial supplies, keep it safe and tidy, remove any refuse, waste or damage, they won't let anything cause damage to the land. Maintain safe, accessible route on public access to the lands, replacing any part of the airport damaged or destroyed. Club must notify the town and county of any improvement or upgrade it wishes to make to the airport lands and shall obtain town and county approval prior to undertaking the same. Tom, just got a little bit of background on that, that was one. That's one of the things that started this conversation about this airport agreement is some Flying Club members a few years ago. Thought the process was taking so long, too long, so they just did, they dug a ditch. It's a simple thing, it was to drain water, they didn't get permission, it didn't work the way they wanted it to, it caused a mess and then everybody started fighting on it. So this is a way of addressing that. You still need permission to do any improvements out there, but, you know, that's. We've eliminated some steps to actually get that approved, so. Pretty quiet on that one, Tom?
Yes, I am.
You weren't when we first talked about it.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so the fee structures, the airport committee, or sorry, the Flying Club will set the fees for the airport. There isn't very much for fees out there, they sell some fuel, they can charge for tie-down, if they, if they like a lot of times when it's a visitor, they don't charge for the tie-down. But they will charge for the spray planes to keep their equipment there, and only those sort of things, so. And security, they'll be responsible for, including but not limited to exterior security, lighting, building alarms, fencing and gates if necessary. Safety, same thing, they'll, they will keep the airport grounds safe, they will let the. The, immediately if anything goes outside their scope, will go, be directed immediately to the county protective services department for investigation and follow-up. And the reason why we went county side is because they have the larger resources. So if it's just a bylaw issue, they would take it and then call us and let GATT go over and do it. But if it's something that say needed the fire department, those sort of things, they have the, they'd be able to dispatch from there a lot quicker than. And the club shall report any significant incidents to the town within twenty-four hours of occurrence and shall report any incidents involving loss or damage to property exceeding two thousand dollars within forty-eight hours. The rate of inspection, basically says the town and county can go in there at any time to look at the, what they're doing and exercise the rights of the agreement. And if the town or county determine that active responsibility that repair and maintenance are required and the airport and club are not effective to work within a reasonable time. The town and county may provide the club with thirty days' notice to make the repairs. And if they fail to, then we can go back on the agreement as well. Rendering unfit, town and county shall not be responsible for any financial losses or damages claimed by anyone as a result of unfit conditions. So say something came down, half the runway washed away and they had to cancel a airshow. They can't come back to the town and county to sue us for that loss of revenue. Advertising and promotion, they can advertise and promote and they just need our permission before attaching any of our brands or logos to any of their advertising. And we do that fairly readily with approval through administration, so. Insurance and indemnity, they won't hold, they'll hold us harmless. And they will maintain three million dollars insurance against the, so the club, and that's basically, according to the county, that's their. Three million has become their standard for all of their third-party insured, so. They were good with that, the club will provide proof of insurance within five days of us requesting it. The county's registered owner of the land will, will ensure the airport against property damage under municipal insurance policy. Private hangars are excluded from the town and county club's insurance and they will have to maintain a million dollars on their, on their hangars. There was some discussion about that, apparently it's fairly hard to get insurance on a hangar without a plane in it. So it's actually gonna be very good to make sure that people have planes in those hangars, so. Stop some of the discussion that they've had about some people using the storage. Default by the club, if anything, if they fail to maintain their nonprofit, fail to meet their financial obligations, abandons the airport, becomes bankrupt or enters into an agreement with the creditors. The town becomes like we're fraudulent or criminal activity. The club assigns the agreement without written consent, we give them ninety days to correct it and if they have not corrected, then they'll breach the agreement and we go back to taking care of it ourselves, yeah. Force measures, obviously acts of God and acts of nature. Dispute resolution, we went with very simple, simple clauses, start with mediation, you know, we'll start with mediation and then arbitration as per the act. Very straightforward, notices and communications, just our addresses. The Flying Clubs actually changed quite a bit, they answer their emails and mail fairly quickly now, which is, which is really good. Additional terms. Disagreement or anything came, shall not be assigned to another party without written consent of the town and county. And such consent will be at the municipality sole discretion, so both county and town will each individually have to approve. If this was assigned, unless otherwise set out in the agreement, be amended in writing with mutual consent of the parties. So again, that will have to go back to town and county council if, if there's an amendment. Governed by the laws of Alberta. If any one term is invalid, the rest stays valid. Time runs out of the essence, of course, with all the agreements, which is why I'm so embarrassed that this didn't get downloaded to the meeting. And it'll be the benefit of all the respective parties. That's the agreement in its whole, Schedule A is how we attached it, and as you guys know, with your council terms going to four years, we try to get these so that they're, that our agreements are renewing within the current council year, so the councils are aware of them. And so we did a four-year with this as well, and town and the county, and you won't have to rewrite the agreement after four years. If it's just an amendment to the, to the annual, which you guys know after reviewing quite a few of these agreements, lots of times it's just your funding commitment that will be the amendment. So this we set up with just an amendment with the town and the county's resolution to possibly, if there is a change in the funding commitment for the four years after them. That is a speed.
Speed process.
I did that, that report took me two hours to do with the Flying Club, so.
So just a little history for everybody in the room. Airport was originally started by the province and the federal government, and there was quite a few of them across the province of Alberta. Then the federal government and the province decided to get out of the small airports. So they turned all of the airports over to the municipalities. And so that's how the town and the county ended up owning the airport originally. Now the town and the county have partnered and George Lee was on the executor or on the committee. And when the, when the runway lights were installed, so they went after a grant, you know, both parties or all three parties participated in the grant process. And so I think George Lee and Lyle and Lorna, I think you were on it too for a bit, all of how to kick out, I was on it for a while too. There is pros and cons to this agreement, the definite advantages outweigh the disadvantages to this agreement. It's like anything, the dispute resolutions probably should be the first thing, it's not a marriage, it's, it's an organizational agreement between three parties. County, the town and the Flying Club to operate the airport. And so there has to be a mechanism for them, any of those parties to get out and how do you get out and still maintain. But the ownership is always going to maintain, be maintained by the county and the town. Lease agreements would be one question that I would have, is the lease funding is from the lease agreement. They will set that agreement up for themselves, I assume, and the money that they collect will go into their kitty.
Into the operations.
Under the operations and will be categorized as lease payments.
Yeah, and so for everybody in the room, currently the leases for all of the sites have been a dollar a year. So, and they generally do a twenty-five, fifty or a hundred-year lease, so. Some guys that later in their life are a little hesitant to sign a hundred-year lease.
See, the, the biggest problem with these too is that because they are leased on a piece of property that you do not own, quite often you cannot get a loan at a bank to build a hangar. So that's creates a dilemma for some of them, that's where Kim talked about the insurance, sometimes it's hard to insure a piece of property. A building on a piece of property that you don't own when it's not a business per se, it's a, so that's why the airport. So that's where that, that category came in there, so just to give you guys a little bit of heads up that it's not as easy as some people think that, you know, that's why there's not a ton of hangars. Generally generated on most airports unless they're privately owned. And this one, you know, theoretically will never be privately owned, it's always going to be public. It's just the day-to-day operations of it and the administration of the operations of it. And again, years ago, we used to switch them back and forth when EMS was part of the organizations. The county took EMS one year and the town took the Flying Club the next, and then it switched back and forth, and it was just a royal pain. Every year, the town took the EMS and county took Flying Club or the airport and then it went. So after a while, they said we will take EMS and you guys take the airport. And, and then like Kim said, in one year, twenty, whatever it was, the town annexed that chunk of land. Two thousand and one, and then the taxation switched from the county to the town, so the town gets the taxes from most pieces of property, cause it's within the town's geographic area. So then we set the bylaws that govern the designs to a degree of the airport hangars.
So did the MPC's bylaw.
So MPC would see them, whereas county's MPC would not, would have seen them, you know, years ago technically, so. It just gives you a little tiny bit of history of. So it just gives you a little tiny bit of history of where it's gone from, how it was started. Um, then Kim more or less had brought up both the, you know, the paving of the runway to do proper paving of the runway and apron. Today it would probably be close to a million bucks or million plus. And so they couldn't say, well, we're gonna do it. Um, we wanna pave the runway next year and the town would have to come up with thirty-three percent, three, and they would have to come up with thirty-three percent, so. Being that the proposal is that the county will have a representative at the table and the town will have a representative at the table of their organization. Theoretically, hopefully that will alleviate some of the issues with some of that.
One, one other thing I'd like to add with this is, uh, of course, you guys know that we've contributed that, uh, uh, eight thousand dollars to the flying club traditionally for many years. One of the things that we found with this agreement, one of the things, the flying club is pretty happy with that. They feel that they can do a good job promoting and actually getting some growth out there by doing some, uh, hangar leases, those sort of things, so, uh, encouraging them to do that. What we saw in the background of several of these agreements that we reviewed is as the airports grow, it also gives opportunity to actually decrease the funding because what they do is as the assessment base grows out there, then they, uh, in Rimby's, uh, situation, they actually took the taxation and gave it back to the committee. So more hangars they got became an incentive for the club to actually build and, uh, and maintain. And the, uh, municipality, rather than funding them financially with this at X amount of dollars, they actually gave them their tax dollars that were collected back into operations. And that actually seemed to work as an incentive to keep, uh, people improving, uh, out there as well. So that's something that, you know, if it's successful.
Yeah, that would, that would be a discussion for another day.
Yeah, yeah. If, if it's successful, it could possibly, you know, uh, the annual contribution could go down. I, I.
Yeah.
In theory, it sounds great, I don't know if we'll see that.
There are other ways that they can gain revenue too by changing their philosophy on the lease too, so. I mean, um, I'm not sure that that would be very agreeable to the club members, but, um.
First ones to convince.
Yeah, like my proposal is if you don't have a hangar, uh, airplane in the hangar, your leasing, um, agreement is ended and you pay a different price for your lease instead of a dollar a year. You maybe pay five thousand dollars a year or X amount of dollars. But as soon as the plane goes in, it goes back down to what it's, what it's designed for. So it doesn't stop so tomber, that's the world going out there and building a hangar. And just using it strictly for storage, my toys and all my, my stuff and never put an airplane in there. Um, so, but anyway, that's between them and the leases, I guess, so. But anyway, um, is there?
So I apologize for the quickness of this report. If you're comfortable with it, there is a motion, uh, drafted. If you're not, I completely understand, I apologize that it didn't.
Yeah, so if you want, we can proceed with this, if not, we can just, um, to, to the next meeting.
So the, uh, our representative, who else is on? Oh, Paul.
Paul.
Uh, on the committee, on the airport committee, you were in agreement with this?
Yes.
Yes. Not you personally, I mean, sorry, I mean the overall group.
Yeah, it was, it was quite, uh, we came out of meetings, uh, you know, positive. Everyone came out of it feeling good. I mean, as, as someone who doesn't really know a whole lot about airplanes and the airport committee, when they made recommendations or whatever. Right-hand circuit off of runway sixteen.
Yeah, exactly. Or what an apron is was my first lesson on there.
We just put with the people who knew what they were talking about, agreed with them. And I think this puts the onus on them because really, uh, I don't really know anything about an airport. I just thought it was cool.
So if, um, the feeling is that we, somebody wished to put a motion on the floor and then if it's either defeated or, um, approved, uh, Kim does have a motion canned here for us.
Your honor, may I read it?
Sure.
The council approved entering into the airport operation agreement with the Bolton County and the Bolton Flying Club.
Okay, and again, the county has received this and approved it and so the flying club?
And the flying club has unanimously approved entering into the agreement via email, so they, they're just waiting on the town and county. Make that motion.
Hey, any discussion on Lyle's motion? And again, we apologize for not having it on the agenda sooner, but. Okay, if here no discussion on it, I'll call a question. Hopefully Karen's got it canned there for us.
And I, I've been doing the board meeting and this last meeting at the same time, so it may have got exported to the board meeting. I'll check that tomorrow.
Okay, it's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you very much for indulging us on that. Um, Kim and I just discussed it and we discussed quite a bit about it and now it's there for us and moved on. So now we'll move back down to item number eleven-one, the management, management activity report. Kim, you're on.
Just loading, everybody's had a chance to read the report. Uh, we were able to get obviously the procedural bylaw, uh, updates were done at this meeting. And, uh, we were able to accomplish everything from the last meeting except for the Schedule A to the fees bylaw because that will be the new council looking at that in December. And that, uh, we're also the, waiting for, uh, our engineers to contact our community services manager to have a meeting with, uh, the sports court to start putting together a design plan and preliminary cost estimates to bring back to the new council. Other than that, unless there's any questions on any other outstanding items, those were, will work.
Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to the CEO report.
So since the last meeting, uh, I attended council meeting, I put, I put together the amendments to the airport agreement, uh, reviewed with the flying club, contacted the county CAO to discuss the airport agreement fiber optics proposal. So, uh, the county's looking to upgrade the fiber optics between their public workshop and the tri-services building. So they're doing, uh, asking for right-of-ways through the boards, which is, uh, the same as all the rest of the fiber optics in our community. Uh, they've made the proposal for transportation, which I see today came through as approved, so, uh, so that they'll most likely be taking that back to their council fairly quickly. And I discussed the, yes, uh, the funding, uh, looks like the funding's going to be dispersed on the, at the same level as what we paid into it was what was explained to me, so. If that's the case, there should be approximately about fifty thousand coming back to the town. Uh, executed the agreement for the, uh, phase-three columbarium, uh, with the, uh, bulk funeral home. Uh, assisted the CAO champion with document templates. I've ordered the new iPads for the new counselors and they are up in Edmonton being configured so that they'll have all the email addresses, that everything will be set up when they, when they get here. Uh, prepared the procedural bylaw, contacted, uh, North and Company about the cubic file, the land's being transferred. Uh, as per the agreement that we put in place, they did move forward development agreements, the land's being transferred back into our name, so that'll probably be in that file. Um, met with a realtor or two, execute listing agreement for the industrial lots. Uh, the, there was an issue with the, uh, MCSS, uh, annual report and it was just their submission. And it was a carryover of, uh, forty-nine dollars they have to have at earmarked, uh, for the next year. So, uh, I had to go in and resubmit because they, they submit them and then I have to, as the, as the managing, you spell it, you have to go in and submit it to the province. We, we were able to get that turned around in a day, so. Discussed, uh, business incentive policy that will come to the next council, uh, for somebody expanding their business. Uh, prepared documents for the inaugural organization meeting. Uh, again, uh, changing that procedure because our, uh, both our mayor appointment procedure and our procedural bylaw indi- indicate that seat selection and, uh, that are based on, uh, the amount of votes you get. So with this one, we'll modify for, uh, the date of submission of your papers because everybody submitted their papers on different days, uh, after their experience, so. Uh, hopefully that will work out well for the organization meeting. Just, I, I had to actually reach out to a few people to, to get some feelings on that, so again. The feeling was we shouldn't amend our procedural bylaw for not having enough counselors because that's not the goal ever, is, is to not have that, so. So, uh, um, just getting ready for, uh, the, the election. We are still having the election on the eighteenth, it'll only be the two referendum questions in the senate. Uh, we'll set up the same way through here as we are doing a normal, uh, election for, you know, municipal purposes. Uh, we feel that we're gonna be able to get everybody through here with the proper amount of distancing just by how we let people through the door and space down the hallway. Being that it's, uh, the referendum and the, uh, senate, we're not anticipating, uh, uh, huge rushes of people like we've had in the past. Uh, last election, you know, we had, uh, one nine-hundred come through, so, and that was for municipal elections, so. So we'll have everything ready for next week. We are doing the, uh, uh, we are sending out some staff to do the, uh, institutional, uh, vote and, uh, and then they'll be back and then we'll just rotate staff so we won't be closing the office or anything, it'll be business as usual in here as well, so. And, uh, other than that, if, uh, council has any questions, I had two formal meetings. I sat through the South Grove meeting, which was, uh, Michelle was there, so she gave a good update. And, yeah, the majority of it was based around the recommendation for increase in, uh, in the per capita funding, so. And, uh, I met with the fairways developer, he's, uh, actually looking at a proposal for, uh, possibly changing some zoning up there to accommodate, uh, some, uh, different kinds of development. And, uh, we've been going back and forth to see what we need to put together to get that, uh, to bring to council, so. Hopefully we'll see some, some development up there. New refreshed development in the area.
Okay, any questions for Kim on, on his? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to development works report. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, we'll move on to public works. Any questions on Stu's?
Uh, just if you do have any questions, Stu did want to find out they're doing the spring cleanup, but obviously he saw the flyers that went out and, uh, they're doing it now this week. And if you do have any questions, they, they basically keep doing circuits. We do have to separate it just like everybody else that goes up to the transfer station. So if some, if they come along and take all the metal and not the wood, it's because that's the truck that's doing the metal. The next truck will be around doing wood a little bit later, so. If you do have any question about it, uh, that's generally the biggest question we get asked in here is, hey, they stopped by, didn't take all the stuff, so if anybody asks you that, so it's cool.
Okay, anything else on Stu's? Not, we'll move on to community services managers. Okay, any questions on Bonnie's or? Hearing none, we'll move on to peace officers. Okay, any questions on the peace officers? Hearing none, would somebody wish to move the administrative reports? Also move Lyle. Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. It is carried unanimously. Now, we're gonna move into in-camera, but I'd like to ask first if council has any problems allowing the new council to participate in their in-camera session on the evaluation of the CEO, being that potentially, or it could. So if you have problems, we'll ask them to leave. If you don't have problems.
I wouldn't leave, I would like to do this fresh when it comes out.
Well, we'll be coming up for another year.
Yeah.
But anyway, if it's agreeable, that's up to you guys.
I don't know. Go, go ahead, Laura. Were you gonna say something?
I think it's okay by me.
Oh. See, I, I don't know if, is what we say gonna sway them one way or another? Should they, we just say no, let them formulate their own opinions on it?
They have a full year before they'll do an evaluation.
Like, I think it's more getting a feel for the procedure and kinda how it goes more than anything, I think. That would be beneficial.
So I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, not me. I, I mean, it was just a thought I had, being that, you know, next week they'll be sworn in as counselors and, um, I mean.
Where did they go?
They're, they're gonna be, I think it's up to you guys.
I guess they could know what our thoughts were and they could still formulate their own.
Yeah, it's up to you guys, you guys decide.
Is that something they, they're even interested in? Maybe, maybe they just wanna leave.
No, I think, uh, any input we can get from you guys is beneficial to us and to me anyway, so.
Okay, if that's agreeable, um, we, we don't have to do anything other than go in camera. There'll be a guest, the same as what any guest would be, so.
Yeah, we just have to write down the names of who's.
Who's here.
Who's here.
Okay.
Uh, you want Karen to stay in as well?
Yeah, if, well, Karen, it's up to you.
It doesn't matter to me, I, I haven't stayed in the past, so.
Okay.
I don't have access to the document.
Okay, then I'll need a, I'll need a copy of the document.
If, I can go in and get it, Karen?
No, that's okay, that's okay, don't worry about it.
Okay, you got it, okay.
So if you wanna leave, Karen, that's great too, so.
Okay, so.
Are we moving in to move?
Yeah, so we need somebody to move in camera. Lorna moved us in. In camera.
And that was.
Lorna moved us in at eight forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Okay, and, um, so we'll call the question. And unfortunately mine died, so I'll have to.
You want this?
No, it's okay.
It's Karen.
Okay, it's carried unanimously or?
No.
One opposed?
Karen.
Okay. Hearing none, officially. A minute.
Okay, all, microphone's on and you are back.
Okay, so I need a motion to move out of camera.
I did, but I didn't realize, we were waiting until we.
Oh, I see, sorry. No, that's not a problem, thank you, Lorna, so Lorna moves us out.
Nine thirty-three.
At nine thirty-three, any discussion on Lorna's motion? Hearing none, we will call the question. Okay, and it's carried unanimously and so we need a motion that, uh, the mayor will meet with the CEO. Lyle? You probably don't have that motion canned, do you?
I do.
What, do you? Okay, thank you. So Lyle moves that, um, the mayor. So Lyle moves that the mayor will meet with the CEO and forward his evaluation. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, call a question. And it's carried unanimously, okay, one more motion. Michelle, thank you to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. And we are officially adjourned, thank you very much.